I'll reach out to some people I know and see if they can't.
Yeah, anyway, I mean, that's really one thing is I'm hoping we can get donations for it, but I did go out.
Are we gonna have an area that we want it put in or?
Yeah, Dan and I are gonna go tomorrow and walk the area and finalize that.
Okay.
Let me know when you do that, Mike. I'd like to go with.
All right, I will, I will let you know. Probably, I'm gonna be in the office probably hopefully around 11. Cause that's when Nolan gets up.
You take Shannon too?
Yeah.
Make sure he's on board and.
Met on Thursday about everything, so.
All right, it is seven o'clock. We'll call the order, the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Suzie, can you call roll for that, please?
Yes. Councilmember Groves.
I'm here, Leah Groves in Lowell, Michigan.
Yep, gotta do that, that's right.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here in Lowell, Michigan.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Here, city of Lowell, Michigan.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Present in Lowell, Michigan.
And Mayor DeVor.
Present Lowell, Michigan. Motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Support.
Marty, any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeVor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen comment for items not on the agenda. This is not council comments. This is just Board of Appeals. We'll do another one during the council meeting. Nobody, Mike?
Nope.
Okay. New business, public hearing. We're gonna open a public hearing for the variance application at 2040 West Main Street. Mike?
I'll turn this over to Andy.
Thank you. So we have a variance request for the rear yard setback at 2040 West Main Street. The applicant is seeking to construct a 15,000 square foot building to accommodate asset recovery business. And based on what we've received so far, it looks like there's gonna be some combination of storage and office uses in the building. And so because they have indicated that they, you know, with the way they built, with the way that they want to construct the building, they're not able to comply with that rear yard setback. So they have requested a variant. So for the board members, we have a handful of standards in the zoning ordinance that we need to walk through one at a time, and the board needs to make findings on, on each, each one of these. For those of you who haven't been through one of these, I know we don't meet with, as the ZBA very much, and you don't have very many requests for variances. A variance is basically a request to violate these, violate these owning ordinance, but do it with your permission. So the thinking is you need, you should have a pretty good reason, and there should be a pretty unusual circumstance that would justify such a request. And so when we walk through these standards, you'll have to find that each one of the standards is met in order to approve the request. And so, and so as we walk through these six items, if you come across one or two that you as a, as a, as a board find is not met, then you would have to say no to the request overall. Other questions? And at what point do you want to open the public hearing? Do you want to do that now before we walk through each of these?
Actually, I screwed up. Marty, this is your, your board. So Marty's the chair, so he can, he can lead us. Sorry, Marty.
No, that's fine. You wanted to steal my thunder. That's okay. I get it. I'll get you later. Uh, yeah, Andy, I wanna open up the, uh, the, the, the public hearing. And I would like to go down everything one by one, and I think we'll take some time and talk about it, and we'll make our decisions as we go.
Do you want to hear from the public before or after we walk through each of the standards?
Uh, before, please.
Okay, so let's do that now, then. We'll go through the standards after that.
So Mike, do we have any public?
You're mute, Mike.
Just unmuted them. We do have one. I believe it's first holding.
Hi. My name is Barb Brown, and I'm the owner's rep for Key Vista, the manufactured housing community to the east. And we just had a couple of questions, some that I think may not get covered at this meeting, but thought it would be at least worthwhile to bring up a couple of our concerns with the homes that are on the other side of the little creek that runs along this property. One of them, what would be noise concerns that we may experience from this business and deliveries and semi trucks, and if they had any plans for any type of a masonry screen walling or soundproofing? Considering the noise that we experience from Fuller Septic and the problems that we have with that business. So we wanted to make sure that those concerns were being thought about along with the variance. And basically, that's, that's our, our biggest concern is, is just the the location of the building and just ensuring the quiet enjoyment of the community that that doesn't continue to be hindered.
Okay. Barb, could we please get your address, please?
Sure. Um, the address, our corporate address is 6960 Orchard Lake Road. It's suite 300, and we're in West Bluefield, Michigan, 48322.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, Mike?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, with that, Andy, would you start us out, please?
So we'll go through these one at a time, and what we typically do at the planning commission meetings is we'll walk through the standards. I'll give you a brief summary of what it's asking for in this case. And what my opinion is, and then the, then, then the council on each one can, can take a vote as to whether or not they believe that standard is met. So these standards are found in section 21.04 of the zoning ordinance. And the first standard says that there are no exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. And exceptional or extraordinary circumstances include narrowness, shelliness, or shape of a specific property, or by reason of topographic conditions or other extraordinary situations on the land, building, or structure. And so basically what that's saying is, is the shape of the parcel, or is there something unique about the, about the actual physical property itself that makes it unnecessarily difficult for one to comply with the provisions of the zoning ordinance? With regard to this specific property, it is an, an odd shaped lot. There's only about 45 feet along Main Street. So it's nonconforming in that respect, and then that width extends south for about 140 feet until it opens up kind of behind the existing businesses there. So there's an oil change place, and there's the, there's a T-Mobile right there. And so this is, so this is gonna be located behind all of that, and just north of the Fuller Septic facilities. So, you know, what we kind of wrote in our report is that it is an unusually shaped parcel, and it would make it difficult for this particular development possibly. But it's not like the property is not totally unusable. I mean, there is room back there for other types of buildings and other shapes and sizes of buildings, and perhaps other types of businesses. But it's a vacant lot. It's not easily visible from Main Street. So there are, are some limitations there. We're kind of iffy on this one personally. Because on one hand, it's, it's, it's usable. On the other hand, it's, it's, it's not, you know, the best, it doesn't have a lot of frontage. You know, it is kind of a goofy shape, so you can't just, it's not like a lot of the other properties on Main Street where it's just a big rectangle with 100 feet of front. You can just pop a building on it and kind of design your site that way.
Does anybody have any questions for Andy before we move on? Andy, I got one for you. I know in C3, we don't allow warehouse. Warehouses, warehousing is not permitted. But I know commercial storage is.
Yeah.
Are they asking for warehousing or?
So we, we have the same question, and we kind of wrote about that in the first page of our, of our memo. So the application contains warehouse slash office uses. You're right, the ordinance does permit commercial storage warehouses, and it's not entirely clear in the zoning ordinance what exactly that means. If that's meant for like, you know, the typical clear access mini storage units, or if there's some kind of other commercial store, but also be included in that designation. I think the applicant is on the call here, and if so, he might be able to provide you with more information as far as what exactly they're thinking about and what, how the property would be typically.
Okay. Is the applicant, Mike, can you turn the applicant's? There he is.
Yep. Good evening. My name is Scott Bell. I'm with Lapham Associates. I represent the, the developer on this project. We're putting together their site plan and working through the, the various stages. The business as, as we had envisioned it and interpreted it for the ordinance is that it is a, a commercial use. It doesn't necessarily require a storefront, which makes it a, an acceptable use where it's at in the back rather than on the front, up on the frontage of the road, which the 45 foot of frontage and unusual parcel works fine, but for all practical purposes, there'll be an office, and the storage is not necessarily warehouse. It is more the processing, the asset recovery business. It'll be bringing inventory in and, and, and things will be going out. But it isn't necessarily a warehouse where there's regular deliveries made and things coming out of there.
That answers the question. And for the variance, it's more about the configuration than it is the use. But we, we bring that up at site plans.
Well, I, I, I sit on planning, so you're gonna hear me ask some questions from that side of it because that's what I do, so. Okay. Is anybody else got any questions for Andy or for Scott before we move on?
What kind of hours of operation is it? Asset recovery, I'm thinking that means you're out picking up stuff that hasn't been paid for and bringing it there. Is that correct?
Um, I am, I'm not totally, oops, am I muted?
Nope.
Okay, I got a mute button above my picture there. I guess I clicked something I shouldn't have. I'm not entirely sure. I'm not sure if the, the owners are on here. Is Damian on? He can maybe explain from the business side what they do. I would envision it being normal business hours, similar to the oil change place that's to the north. But maybe there's, one of the owners can explain the process better.
Mike, you wanna unmute BMD, and he can answer Marty's question?
Yeah, so we don't do recover, like asset recovery the way you guys are thinking though. We do industrial automation controls. So our recovery is out of industrial plants. We do all of our work onsite in those plants. So yeah, our normal hours are eight to four. But we do a lot of school to work with high school kids, so our true hours really are probably 11 to three. We let them go for practices and all that kind of stuff after school.
Thanks.
You bet.
More electronics and things like that versus, you know, other, other material?
Yes, yes. I don't know how I can make it easy for you guys to picture this, but think of like computers, you know, laptop, that type of stuff. I mean, not laptops, but that type of comparison.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any questions for these two gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay. Andy, do you want us to vote on these one by one, or do you wanna wait till we get to the end? What, what do you think?
Ideally, you should vote on these one at a time.
Okay. So for the first one, look for a motion on that, and then we'll continue.
Hey Marty, can I interrupt for a sec?
Sure.
As long as we have them unmuted, and he's talking about his hours and what they're doing, do you think it'd be possible for him to answer the questions from Key Vista about?
Noise.
Noise mitigation and stuff like that, just so we don't have to.
Sure. With the shape of that building that you guys have, I mean, you have trucks coming in from the north, swinging to the west and backing straight up to the building. So you would have the entire building as a, a sound barrier to the east property line, which is also, I believe it has a good vegetation buffer as well as for screening of lights or anything like that. But it wouldn't have, you know, direct lighting, people coming straight at it, or like looping around the building with backup alarms without some kind of structure in the way, is the way that we're proposing that site be laid out.
And he said normal business hours already, right? So we wouldn't have to worry about late night noise or?
Building in stormwater, so there's, there's no parking or any drives that are immediately adjacent to that east property side. We have a good buffer across the whole, the, the way it's laid out.
Well, I understand that, but we have homes not very far from the back of that building. And just like the auto dealerships, we've requested privacy fence be put up along that back too as a extra buffer, so.
Isn't the, the rear of the building a field and then you have the septic directly there? I didn't think there is.
There's a, there's a water main easement that's like a 20 foot water main easement. Then you've got the county drain, and then you've got their.
And Marty, if I can jump in here quick, all of these issues we are defending and that, that's all planning commission stuff that we can talk about. So if this is approved by the ZBA, there would still be a public hearing and special land use and site plan process for the actual use itself. So all of the surrounding family, including the manufactured home park would get another notice for the planning commission where they were entertaining the applicant and looked at all the specifics. The applicant would have, had everything all drawn out for the site in that regard. So not to, you know, stop the conversation because it's, it's, it's good discussion, but you know, we can also save some of these.
Nope, that's fine, Andy. It's a, I'm so used to sitting on that other board doing this that it's just force of nature, so. Okay, with that, I look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment.
Sure.
Go ahead, first holding.
Hi, thank you again. Um, I, I just wanted to mention that maybe, you know, the sound barrier or buffer or privacy fence, just to mention that maybe this would be an opportunity for the petitioner to, at site plan approval, to condition it on possibly erecting some type of a barrier, whether it be a privacy fence or some kind of soundproofing at that point. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
With that, Marty, I'll make a motion to accept section one of section 21.04.
Do I have a support?
I'll support.
Jim and Mike? Suzie, roll call, please.
Board member DeVor.
Yes.
Board member Salzweedle.
Yes.
Board member Yankovic.
Yes.
Chair Chambers.
Yes.
And board member Groves.
Yes.
All right, Andy, number two, please.
Right, so standard two states that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the very sought is not of some general or recurrent in nature as to make the, as to make reasonably practical the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions or situations. In simpler terms, that means, does this happen so frequently that we should just amend the ordinance instead? And so the answer to, to that question, in my, in my opinion, is no. I don't think we've had a request like this ever in front of the ZBA, at least not in the, you know, 10 years or so that, that we've been here working on these kinds of assignments for you. So again, this kind of goes back to the odd parcel shape. It is a bit usual, and there aren't many like it in the city, so I don't think that adjusting the zoning ordinance would, would be an appropriate thing to do given the circumstances.
Okay. Any questions? Mike, you got anybody else there that wants to say something? Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion.
So moved to accept number two.
I'll support.
The first and second, Cliff and Mike. Suzie, please.
Board member Salzweedle.
Yes.
Board member Yankovic.
Yes.
Board member Groves.
Yes.
Board member DeVor.
Yes.
And Chair Chambers.
Yes. All right, Andy, number three, please.
Standards that the variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right similar to that possessed by other properties in the same zoning district and in the vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed to sufficient to warrant a variance. So in this case, they're looking to, you know, construct a commercial building that is a common property right in the C3 district. But I would also, you know, note that their proposed building is, is a bit bigger than many other buildings in that same zoning district. That said, the shape is, is unusual, and the setbacks along with the property shape do limit somewhat the, the placement of the building regardless of its size. The shape requires that, you know, it forces you to put the building towards the rear of the lot. And so there is some limitation there in terms of how the building is sited and oriented on, on the property. Given that any business would have to deal with parking and landscaping and stormwater management and all that kind of thing. It is possible, although I can't say for sure, it's possible that other property owners could struggle similarly with a different type of building. So this one is a bit larger than normal, but I think there are some, some limitations present here. There that would, you know, possibly justify this. So again, I'm kind of iffy on this one myself. And so, Mr. Chambers, back to you.
All right, thank you, Andy. Uh, does anybody have any questions on this one?
Andy, how much larger is it than the normal buildings in that given area? Is it 20%? Is it the L shape? What are we looking at?
Um, the largest building in the immediate vicinity would be the building that contains the T-Mobile that's right in front of it. This one would be bigger than that. It's, it would be, it would be significantly larger than the oil change shop. It'd be quite a bit bigger than the dental, than the low, low dental care building. The RV is bigger, you know, it's, it's, it's bigger than most things. Obviously, it's not bigger than like the tractor supply building, but that's only a bigger piece of property. So it would be, I mean, it's not like shockingly huge compared to the rest of the buildings in the area, but it is definitely larger.
And then that setback, Andy, the 15 feet from the back. What is our, what's allowed for, for, to the fire department for access to the back of these buildings?
Uh, that I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's 150 feet from any paved surface, if I'm not mistaken. Scott, if you can correct me if I'm wrong. But, uh, in the back there, you have access from the opposite side as well. So right across there, so there's, you'd have, what, 60 feet from the back of the building?
Yeah, something like that. And yeah, I don't know what the fire marshal specifically, each municipality kind of has their own measurement that's there, but it's usually between 200, 300 feet usually from any portion where we can access with a fire truck. And I, I think this parcel meets that, so.
Is, is the office a single story than the warehouse is two story approximately height wise?
Uh, I wouldn't say, I, Rick, how tall is the building? Is it 15, 16 foot eve height on this building?
Honestly, we haven't gotten that far on the design. But I, I know we're not looking to have like an upstairs, but I, I think we need, you know, tall enough doors for like a garage overhead door. You know, so you can get in like that. And then obviously, that would probably be the, either the lower, the height eve, and then it would slope up because it'll be a pre-engineered metal building. So it'll pitch one way.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion for number three.
I'll make that motion for number three.
Support.
Jim and Cliff, Suzie, roll call, please.
Board member Yankovic.
Yes.
Chair Chambers.
Yes.
Board member Groves.
Yes.
Board member DeVor.
Um, no.
And board member Salzweedle.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Andy, number four, please.
Number four is that the variance will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property in these surrounding neighborhoods. So, you know, being cognizant of the comments made by the representative from the manufactured home park to the east. You know, we don't think that granting the variance would be a, a significant detriment to starting property values, and there's a difference there. You know, ignoring for, for a moment the actual use of the building, we're just focusing on, on the variance with that, which is the, the decrease in the setback, you know, from 35 or 30 down to 15 on the south. And so the primary impacted party in that case. And so the primary impacted party in that case is going to be the property owner to the south. And so we don't think that that individual, that property would be significantly adversely impacted by, by the, the, by the, the variance. If there are concerns about the use itself and how it might impact the neighborhood, that, that's a great planning commission discussion item when that comes up for the special name play plan review at, at the planning commission level.
Hey, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on number four? I do have one, and I would really like to hear, I'd really like to have the fire department weigh in on this one because of the, the setback going back and everything going in, but I would like to hear what they have to say about that. I don't know if we can do that now, or we do that at planning, Andy.
Well, if your, if your question or concern is specifically related to the setback, you know, that, that decrease and the rear setback, then I think now would be inappropriate time for it. You know, the difference is that when they go to, if this is granted, when they go to the planning commission, they're going to show this building is being fifteen feet off of that rear setback, and there's not anything that you can do about it because you've already approved that reduction.
Okay. Um, I think on this one, I would really like to hear the way in on the fire department, especially from Shannon. Any concerns they have on that?
You want me to call him?
Yeah, can we do that?
Yeah, give me one minute, I'll call him and see if he can get in on this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything we can help on the, the question?
No, I just want to hear from our fire chief. At the end of the day, he's going to weigh in on this anyway, so I don't need this going to planning and this not being done correctly, so. We'll just take a minute here and see if Shannon can come on. If he can, he can. If he can't, well, we'll probably end up moving on, but I would, I would like to hear from our fire chief.
I'm sending them the link right now.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yep. Be letting them in right now.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Hello.
Good morning.
Yeah. Bring you up to speed relatively quick here, Shannon, and we have a property on an irregular shape. They want to do a setback to fifteen feet to the property line. I had concerns and questions about the fire department, and I'd really like to hear you weigh in on the setback going to that shallow of a depth. I believe the normal setback is what, Andy?
Thirty-five feet.
Yeah, thirty-five feet. So Shannon, I'd like to hear, I'd like to have you weigh in on this just for a minute.
Okay, so, so we're looking to do a setback to, to just fifteen feet from thirty-five feet?
Yes, sir.
And this setback off from a roadway?
Well, it's an ill, it's an, it's an L-shaped property, and it's going to butt up to the back of Fuller Septic System is where the property is. And they're requesting to be fifteen feet off the property line.
Okay, um, so what's, uh, what's the concern then? Access for us?
Yep.
Okay, so it's coming in off from Bowes or off from Maine?
Coming in off Maine.
Trying to picture the lot in my head.
Attached. Does he have access to that, Mike? The photos?
I'm wondering if, Mike, could you screen share the picture?
It's gonna be a minute. I don't have that on my computer, so it's gonna be a minute.
Okay. So the access is coming in off from Maine. It's a hydrant section. And you're concerned that that's not a far enough setback for us to have access, or too far of a setback for us to have access?
I'm, I want to know if that's too far of a setback for you for access.
Yeah, if Mike, if I can, because hydrant, hydrant, applied area, I wouldn't think that, that line is going to be that far.
I sent him a picture of the, the drawing that we got in the packet.
Just to, to add to the south property line, you have the, there's a, a power line that goes through there, and there's about a, a three-foot, two and a half, three-foot berm at the property line.
Is this the one you want?
Yeah.
Do you see that one, Shannon?
He, let me switch screens back here, doing this all off the, on the fly phone here.
That's why you're our new fire chief. We know you can do things on the fly.
Okay, yeah, so the retaining wall. What's the, uh, what's the proposed purpose of the building? Or, or, I get into that.
Yeah, would one of the owners like to explain to chief what the building's gonna do?
Yeah, it, it's an office recovery or asset recovery business. There'll be an office space up on the front, in the back is where they'll be reclaiming electronic materials from industrial operations, control panels, various circuit boards, things of that nature.
Okay.
Like robotic assembly lines and things like that.
Yeah.
On-site welding or?
Damien, can you comment to that?
Yeah, there will be no onsite welding, no onsite burning, nothing. It's basically just storage.
So similar to the, uh, the property to occupy, I have my warehouse.
That's, that's us.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I'm true.
Yeah, so, so we sold that building. We're actually still occupying about nine thousand square feet of that building right now, which just isn't enough, and that's why we want to build the new, the buil- new building here, but yeah, same business, that's us.
Trying to switch my phone to size.
Can't hear you, Shannon.
You said about nine thousand?
The new ones propose that about fifteen.
Okay, fifteen thousand?
Correct. The current one that is in, they're limited to nine thousand at the current moment.
So the, then you're planning for a suppression system in the building as well, then?
I think would be required to by code.
Yep, yeah, it should be shortly over twelve thousand. Thousand's gonna, gonna call for it, so. Given that, given that the hydrant access is going to be close, I don't really see a huge issue for us. We've got enough line to lay in.
What is your limited distance for pulling your lines?
Well, because we do cover the townships, we, we've got quite the, the fly line. I mean, our first U-engine carries twelve hundred and, twelve hundred feet of, of five-inch fly line. So, I mean, we, we can lay in for a haul, but we start having friction losses, things that we need to be concerned of as we start getting further down, especially going in wide system, but I mean, we're not going to be that far. Trying to, kind of, like I said, squib through my phone here, let me see this, but I don't see anything immediate that screams to me that's gonna be, I mean, you're gonna have room for tractor trailers coming.
Correct. It'll come straight from the north to the south, swing to the west, and back up to where it says the loading dock with two delivery receiving doors.
Hey, Shannon, would it be helpful if they were to put like a Siamese connector on it, on the building, so you don't have to worry about the hoses? I doubt if they have a fire pump, but would that help?
Well, though, because of the size of the
We'll have an FDC on it.
Yeah, so we, we do require five-inch darts fitting FDC connection for any of our suppression new, because that's the size supply that we, we have. Yeah, that would be, that'd be required anyhow. Yeah, I don't see any immediate concerns here that, that we couldn't be able to access or that limited. How wide the driveway going back there?
What do we got there, twenty, twenty?
Twenty-four, a twenty-four foot wide drive would be, but would be going to the back. We'd make sure we'd have turn radiuses for fire trucks to get through there.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't see any I don't see anything immediate that, that jumps out and says that we're gonna have a problem. I see where you're talking, though. Off the backside of the landscape, is that gonna be driver, I mean, around the building?
Just be landscaped lawn.
On the north of where it says parcel two by that retainable, that's the proposed area for the stormwater management pond as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, the tack lines to the back challenge, but again, suppressed building, so I'm not overly concerned that that's gonna be a problem.
Hey, Shannon, just, you know, that butts up to the mobile home park right there, and that's where that water ditch runs through and all that, so I don't know if you have that, but that is on that, on that east side of the building.
That's, that's probably the only thing that would be of any concern if we had to get lines around the backside of that. You know, as for attack lines, those are a little less than the twelve thousand or twelve hundred that we care on for supply, but being a suppressed building, not not doable.
That picture may be a little misrepresenting. The building is actually further to the west because there is a water main easement also, so we've got a, a setback and a twenty-foot water main easement that we're off of, and our stormwater basin, we'll have to be able to maintain it, so we're gonna have an accessible spot around that storage area. So to get around the building, that side of the building, there'll be plenty of room. You'll have it at least twenty foot from the building of that surface area.
Yeah, it's more just the length from, from the last paved space.
Yeah.
You know, our tack lines are two hundred feet. Obviously, we can marry them together, but you know, coming around the building along that, that back wall or that.
I think from the south, though, there's, I don't think there's any obstruction.
Okay.
South. I think that's just a gravel parking area on the other side of the, that little berm there.
Yeah, I don't see any that, that immediately strikes me. As concerning, sir. Any council questions?
No, and I thank you for jumping on and, and helping us out here.
No problem.
Just wanted to make sure we get, we get this, you know, because once it leaves us, if it goes to planning, well, there's nothing to do about it, and I just want to make sure we're good with what we're looking at, so you're our expert in that, so I appreciate it.
No problem. Anytime. We'll go back to my ducky memory game now.
All right, hey, thank you, Shannon. Mike, can you put us back to the regular screen, please? There we are. All right. So, for me, that, that settles everything. I, I liked the fact that Shannon weighed in. I don't have any other concerns about this one, so does anybody else have anything?
Once I heard it was a fire suppressed building.
Okay. So if we don't have anybody else, I would look for a motion to accept it.
I move, we accept number four.
I'll support.
Cliff and Mike, Suzie, please.
Chair Chambers?
Yes.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
Yes.
Board member Salzweedle?
Yes.
And board member Yankovic?
Yes.
All right, Andy, number five, please.
Number five is that the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. And the purpose of the zoning ordinance is a fairly lengthy list, but it includes the provision for appropriate relationships between uses of land in their locations. And in the C-three district, specifically, it talks about permitting a mixture of residential office and commercial land uses, but not necessarily in downtown-style buildings. As we discussed, this, this building appears that it'll function in more of a, you know, commercial and quasi-industrial nature. But we also know that there is industrial zoning directly to the south of this property. And changing the setback doesn't really affect that. You know, similarly, if, if they have very limited hours of operation and things like that, they're gonna be, they're going to be mitigating a lot of those impacts and the location of the building is going to have a serious effect on the overall intent and purpose of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Does anybody have any questions on five? If not, I, I would like to make a motion that we accept number five.
I'll support that.
Well, it's me and Cliff. Suzie, roll call, please.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
Yes.
Board member Salzweedle?
Yes.
Board member Yankovic?
Yes.
And Chair Chambers?
Yes. Andy, number six, please.
All right, the last one is that the immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the variance was not created by any action of the applicant. And so every once in a while, when we have these requests, an applicant does something silly, and that, 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 that is what drives the, the, the request for the variance. So sometimes they, they will have put a structure in the wrong spot or divided their property in a weird way, or placed the building in an unusual location that, that requires a bunch of variances. That's not the case here. They acquired the property after the land divisions occurred, which created the That's not the case here. They acquired the property after the land divisions occurred, which created the unusual shape of the lot, which is a big part of what's driving this particular application. So in our opinion, the this is not a self created hardship.
Okay. Does it? I just see that about the the water and sewer, but obviously we know there's an easement down the back now. It's twenty foot wide, so that kind of cleans that up. Does anybody have anything for six?
I have a motion that we approve it.
I have a support.
Cliff and Jim. Suzie. Would you do roll call, please?
Board Member DeVor.
Yes.
Board Member Salzweedle.
Yes.
Board Member Yankovic.
Yes.
Chair Chambers.
Yes.
Board Member Groves.
Yes.
All right, so since you have approved each of the six standards here, I would suggest that one of the members make one final motion to approve the variance request due to the fact that you found that all six of those standards have been satisfied. And I have one condition to or one suggested condition to attach to that decision, which would be that the applicant shall comply with any stipulation of the local area fire department regarding emergency vehicle access.
Thank you, Andy. I would like to make a motion that we accept, we accept this proposal. Do I have a second?
A second.
Myself and Leah. Susie, roll call, please.
Board Member Salzweedle.
Yes.
Board Member Yankovic.
Yes.
Board Board Member Groves.
Yes.
Board Member DeVor.
Yes.
And Chair Chambers.
Yes. Congratulations, you have your I will see you gentlemen at Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to meeting you at Planning Commission.
I look forward.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
I don't think we need to do board commission reports and we don't need to do council comments, correct, Mike? Where'd the mayor go?
Oh, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so with that being said, Jim.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-one.
I'll support. We need to roll on that too, don't we?
Board Member Yankovic.
I'm gonna consider it. I'll vote yes.
Chair Chambers.
Yes.
Board Member Groves.
Yes.
Board Member DeVor.
Yes.
Board Member Salzweedle.
Yes.
All right, now we'll call the city council meeting to order. And Susie, can you call roll for that, please?
Yes. Councilmember Groves.
Yes, Leah Groves in Lowell, Michigan.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
We don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, Lowell, Michigan.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Yankovic.
Still here, still in Lowell, Michigan.
And Mayor DeVor.
Yes, but I went to Kent County, Michigan. Motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll make that.
Marty.
Mark.
And Jim. Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Is this to approve that there's no citizen discussion?
Oh, good point.
Just asking.
What is the, sorry, what's the question?
Or what are we saying yes to? Oh, yes, Ben, yes.
Mayor DeVor. Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Okay, now citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
Steve, Steve Doyle here, seven oh six Riverside Drive Lowell. I can't actually see the agenda, but the social district that's coming up, I have a few questions about that. When when does that start? What is the date of that?
We don't have a definitive date. We're hoping for this Friday. I don't anticipate it being this week because the applications I don't believe will be all approved through the liquor control commission. So if that's the case, we'll move it to to next week, the week following either Thursday or Friday.
And is there is there a ending date for the social district?
At this time, no. They, we would have to have a public hearing to actually end the district. That being said, we are looking at this for a period of time.
Also, understand or or heard that there may be fires in the social district?
That is correct.
And where are those fires going to be?
We haven't finalized the location. We're looking in the area of Monroe Street. We're going to close Monroe from the alley behind the New Country Trail to Main Street and also on the Riverwalk.
So you've got a select spot for those there?
Yeah, yeah, we don't have the exact spot, but those are the areas we're looking at.
Yeah, not not on Main Street in front of in front of buildings.
No.
And who can start a fire?
It'll be both the in conjunction with the Public Works and the Police Department.
Okay, and what?
Daily.
So it, so those, the fires will be managed by Public Public Works?
Or the Fire Department, correct.
Okay. Okay, and what what is burned in the fire?
Wood.
Wood, okay. I think that I think that answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Hi, guys. I'm Ashley Dawn with owner of Creative Party Bug, and I have two ideas for this city to be involved. I would like to
Ashley, we need your, sorry, Ashley, we need your address first.
Um, it is one zero two West Main Street, but I had to close my shop temporarily, so.
We need your residence.
Okay, one one seven three one Boulder Drive East Lowell, Michigan, four nine three three one.
Okay.
So I would like to I would like to propose two ideas in this also be involved, maybe with the social district. I'm wondering if I need a permit to pull to create either the greenhouses or the igloos on the Riverside area for people to rent out. This could be restaurant involvement as well as just, you know, people wanting to rent a place to sit outside and either have their meals or drink their beverages or, you know, I'm not sure what I would go about proving that. So I guess I want to see if it would be approved first of all. And the route I need to take for that, if I need to pull any permits, so Creative Party Bug would be responsible for the greenhouses. Or if there would be a way that I could be involved with the the social distancing circle or whatever you guys are forming with the fire pits and everything, that may be a good area for the igloos. And then my second idea is I recently visited Sparta and they have those pods for the businesses that have closed. And I was wondering if that would be something Lowell would like to be involved in. Just my business alone, I would absolutely like to have one of those, but this could be just a temporary fix, you know, until the pandemic's over and then people can get back to their spaces or their storefronts that they had, or this could be something where we're expanding the business district. And so this would be an area along the river as well. So those are the two ideas that I had. And I'm just wondering what route I should go. You know, if I need permits to be pulled or if I can even do this. You know, if I have to get my insurance involved, how how would you guys go about doing this?
We've actually had the issue with the igloos come up. There are certain rules that allow it, but there's certain rules with the social distancing with liquor commission that restricts it. So why don't myself and the city attorney discuss it and I'll get back to you on that. And then on the other issue, I think you're, I'm more familiar with the chalets Muskeg, downtown Muskegon, I'm sure they're the same things. I don't know much about pods. I'd have to research that more and I can get back to you on that as well.
Chief Hurst. Are you available to talk about the pods? You're the one that kind of mentioned it to me before.
I live, I live up in Sparta. They've got, these are little, they're small storage containers that are converted into stores. They're like starter businesses. They have them in the city parking lot. They've got them fixed up nice, interior outsides all painted. They're all climate controlled. They make for a neat little shop. And Scott can probably get those for free through the government on the ten thirty-three program. We would just need someone to do the painting and fixing up and all that stuff.
What happens to the pods when the social district is over? Because I don't want a bunch of empty pods on the Riverwalk. Jessica?
Yeah, can I just weigh in for one second? So so social districts, just so you know, by definition are common spaces for everybody who gets a social district permit to utilize. So it gets a little bit complicated when you've got exclusive use within the social district. That's not to say that there aren't creative ways for us to maybe try to accommodate these ideas. Like you mentioned, Ashley, they're showing up all over in different communities, but they're doing that legally by carving those areas out of the social district boundaries. Because again, social districts are by definition shared spaces. So if you start, you know, run renting them out, taking meals to private parties, that sort of defeats the purpose of the shared space. But but that being said, there are ways to do it. So happy to discuss.
Okay, anything? Ashley, did that answer your question?
Not really. Um, so I feel that, you know, making making changes for the long run is kind of something that we need to just go as it comes. I mean, we don't know how long this pandemic's going to be here, so I think we need to focus on what we can do right now to get community involvement, but still social distance. And I think you being responsible and going by all the ordinances, you know, the ten P M curfew, having only four to six people in the igloos, I mean, there's so many things that follow the to follow the rules that that I think have been Creative Party Bug in charge of that should should answer a lot of things. But what about the permits? Is there something that, you know, you guys have to approve in order for it to happen?
This is the first I've heard of this. I really have to do more research to get you those answers. I can't just say yes right now, but if you give me a day or two, I can get back to you on that.
Okay. And then as far as the pods go, I was thinking right along the river, you know, over by where the library is, and they have the big, the open circle right there. So I'm not sure what.
Yeah, I like I said, I I'm gonna talk to the city attorney about the social district requirements. Like I said, this is the first I've heard of this, so I'm not trying to be dismissive. I think they're good ideas, but I just got to make sure that we can legally do all this and what the requirements are.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Citizen discussion? Okay, whole business, number A, Mike, Water and Sewer.
Yeah, so at our, we met with our task force back on January fourteen. Mayor, myself and Dan were our representatives for the city. We had about an hour and a half, two hour discussion about we had, we went through a number of different topics. Mike, feel free to jump in if I'm missing something. The beginning of the other discussion, we talked about some different ideas of what things could happen with the with the with the water and sewer systems. One of the ideas that came about originally was an idea that was done in Caledonia Township in the village where they actually sold the water plant to the township. The village did. And the they then had a, because the township was 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 fielding all the growth, the village was was mostly built out. And at the time, they talked about, they sold the, they sold the facility to the to the township and then they had an agreement with the city of Grand Rapids for sanitary sewer. That was an idea that was kicked around. Then they're working through different things that we could, that could be considered. One of them was a four twenty-five, and we had quite a lengthy discussion on that. And and that was an issue where we were a part on. Obviously, I believe, I mean, the mayor and I, in our discussions with them, we have we have reservations about creating additional tax base outside the city limits by extending our water and sewer and not getting anything for that. That's a, that is a, that is a serious issue. We've already done that once. From where I sit, it was not a decision for the city of Lowell. So that was very, that was, we we had a, we had a discussion about that. Even during the discussion, Dave Austin actually happened to participate in the meeting. He'd he'd shared some examples where communities that have done that have cities and townships where they've benefited substantially by doing that. That being said, we were say that the 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 discussion, we definitely, there's definitely was tension in the room. That being said, towards the end of the meeting, I pitched the idea of at least considering the possibility of the city selling the water and the wastewater facilities to the township. And we become a wholesale customer. Now, there's a number of things that would have to happen if it was, if it was something that was beneficial to us, then it it would make sense to do. That being said, there's a lot of research. I'm not committing the city one way or another to this. I don't think that's what we we need to do. We've done. I can tell you, I've done some research in the last couple of weeks about it. I can tell you that in Caledonia, the that sale of property or the sale from the village to the township involve no money. So that obviously would be a deterrent to the city of Lowell if if that were the case. That being said, during our discussion, we discussed the valuation of the assets. And if you recall, about a year ago, we had the proposal for the for the city, the township and and the developer to each pitch in and fair it at the time. For the study, I believe it was thirty seven thousand dollars for a company P F N out of Pennsylvania. They do valuation of 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 water and wastewater asset. And they've done that for a number of communities throughout the east coast. And if you recall, at the time, the city had no problem with the valuation being done. But the city didn't want to pay for it. That was the action that the council took about a year ago. So I had explained that situation to them. And in my discussion with them, it was, the idea was pitched, well, what if the, what if the developer paid for it? Paid for the city's share, but if the if the city and the township come to some sort of an agreement, whatever that may be, then the city would reimburse their third back to the developer for the cost of the study. At the time, I I said that wasn't an issue to me. It was something I was willing to bring back to the to the council for consideration. But we also had to update the proposal. So from the end of that meeting till now, we did get an updated proposal, which was and basically what we'd like to consider doing unless you don't, it's totally up to the pleasure of the council, is if we were to develop a memorandum of understanding with the township. develop a memorandum of understanding with the township, basically that we would agree to have this valuation done. And, um, we would have this valuation done. If there was some sort of an agreement down the road, then we would reimburse our share back to the developer. I know I've had Dick and Jessica look at what we talked about conceptually to start. I know there are some concerns about that. So we would want to, I don't really, I'm not really prepared to discuss that part of it at this time, but more to see if this concept is something that the, uh, the city council would be, would be interested in considering and exploring further. Mike, am I missing anything?
No, not really. We did talk about the township's desire to not call it a 425 or not have the same parameters as a 425. Um, so there's some things, development agreements and stuff that we can look into that are similar, but not the same. So not, uh, not one of the best meetings I've ever sat through, but, um, I do think the valuation is important. And if we don't come up to a deal or come up with an agreement, we lose nothing. So.
Right. And, and just something to remember. I mean, this, if we were to, if we were to sell the assets, the water and the wastewater treatment plants, I would this valuation would tell us what the value, what the value may be. Um, that would, that would help us with this. That being said, this, like I said, this has to be something that's beneficial to the city. It's gotta be win win for everyone. If, if we're not winning on this, then there's no reason for us to have to do this. Um, also, uh, lost my train of thought. Um, you know, one of the, the most important thing to me is making sure the employees who work for us are protected. If there's no protection in place for them, I'll never recommend it. Um, but they weren't, you know, they weren't against that idea when we discussed it.
Mike, from, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like it doesn't warrant any more meetings with the township. It sounds like there's, there's a line in the sand and nobody's willing to cross it. Or do you think there, there is some hope other than the sell is our only option?
No, I think there, I think, uh, most of the options probably with the exception of the 425 are still on the table. Um, and I think the township would tell you the same thing. I think, um,
But I would still tell you, sorry. Consider the 425. Um, I'll never, I mean, unless we come to some workable deal. The 425, while I still think for the city's end is still on the table, but willing to look at other options.
I would, yeah, uh, there's some good talk going on between us and the township. I'm getting feelings that the facilitator is uh, tending to lean more towards the developer. So I'd like to continue those conversations with the township, just to make sure that that doesn't happen. Uh, the last presentation I thought was biased. I got some pushback on that. I think I was the only one who felt that way, but it's how I felt. It was, I don't think skewed towards, uh, fairness really. So, but the conversations are continuing and I think they're productive for 90% of them.
Are you, are you asking us to consider tonight whether to have this PFIM do the valuation and it's no money out of our pocket unless we sell it? Am I understanding?
No, 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 no. No money out of our pocket unless we come to a deal of any kind.
Right. And at this point in time, we're not even asking you that. We're just asking you that if we brought back a memorandum of understanding between the city of township with all of the terms, is that something that you would consider?
You said something about, uh, not so much a 425, but something very similar. I would like to see what that entails.
A development agreement, um, I guess the best way to explain it is it's a, an à la carte 425. So they can refuse some services, right? So the 425, they would encompass all the city services at that mill rate and then they would, you know, make a little bit of money on their end. But a development agreement, it's the same general idea, just with more of a an à la carte service menu.
So the cops wouldn't have to go there, but they'd have our water and sewer or something.
If that was what was negotiated, yes, that's an option.
Okay. Well, I personally see a breakdown of what Mike, what you just said. So to how it all plays out in the comparison. I mean, I'm not, but I want to apples for apples. Um, I just want to see how they all line up.
Sure. I can, we can come back with something.
And Todd, Shaw and I do have, uh, we haven't set a date in stone yet, but we are going to go up to Caledonia and try to talk to them about how that all went down, how it even got brought up initially, what's all included. I wouldn't say we're anywhere near selling anything right now.
Right.
Well, didn't, Mike Burns, didn't you just say no money was exchanged in Caledonia?
Caledonia, in the village and township, there was no money exchanged. At this point, you're like,
Why go study that? I mean, why look into that?
I don't know why there was no money exchanged. All I can tell you is there was a 55 page agreement that I read. And there was no money that exchanged.
My point, my point is why go investigate something in which no money was exchanged?
Oh, I was just going to look at, you know, the terms, the wholesale rate goes for how many years if you, you know, I don't want to sell it and then get some customer agreement for five years. And then in five years they come back and say, well, it's ours now. So here's your new rate.
Okay. That is a concern. We have to, if we do that, you will have to negotiate that out in the long term. But it's, you know, it's at least, at least an idea to look at. Like I said, it may go nowhere.
I just want to cover every base and say, yep, I looked at that. Yep, I looked at that.
Okay.
I guess, you know, as far as knowing what the value of our properties are, and it doesn't cost us anything to get that information. Well, I don't see an issue with that. I actually see that as a good thing. Because nobody really knows what a working sewer plant or a working award-winning water plant is truly worth. So I would be curious on the numbers. So that's my feeling.
Confirm or deny, I heard something to the effect that the property they were looking at to put their own water treatment uh, facility in, that person is no longer interested in selling it or something fell through, or is that just street rumbling that I should let go right through my ears?
The township backed out of their purchase agreement for that individual property. They did not back out of the idea of building their own, just
Okay.
Backed out of the purchase agreement of that property. The meaning, the reasons behind it, I don't know. I just know.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
So Cliff, you can still pay your informant. He's doing a good job for you.
He?
She, whatever.
Also, don't assume that that word is singular. Cliff may have more than one informant. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see what it would, what the, uh, at least see what the agreement would look like if we were to do the valuation, but I do think with nothing to lose unless we come to a deal. And even then it's, I think, what was our portion, Mike, like 11 grand?
No, the total contract's about $40,000. So divide that by three, that would be about.
So 13 and some change.
Like 13,000.
Three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Thank you.
But if we need it five years down the road for something else, then it's going to cost us 40 grand. So take that into account too.
Yeah. That's why I said it's, I don't have a problem finding our values. No, I think that's a good thing. Uh, we'll always know it. Um, whether this works or not, we still know what the value of, of, of our properties.
Yeah. Wouldn't it help in your negotiations? I mean, if, if you knew we're sitting on a 20 million dollar asset or whatever.
I believe we need to know what the value of, of the
Yeah, I think we, we should go full steam on that one.
Right. I agree.
I mean, no matter which direction we go in, knowing what we have is a foundational thing.
Yeah.
Right?
And we'll know it at a 66% discount.
This isn't being recorded, is it?
It is.
Even if we, even if we don't, you know, the valuation doesn't mean that sell is the direction to take.
Right.
But even if the township was to do a buy-in, how do we set a price for that? Or how do we tell them this is how much money it's going to cost to buy into our system without any kind of valuation?
Something I don't know the valuation will take into account is the years of investment our community has made to the system. I don't know how you calculate that value, but there is a value to that. This, this, these systems have been placed for over 50 years and there is, you know, whatever you come out of, that, that investment needs to be taken into account, however they value this. It's a very important part of this.
In this place, uh, the township, they're the ones that, these are the people they want to use?
Actually, we looked at it and there was very few people that even do this kind of thing. Um, and this was one that we had agreed on with the township, oh, probably over a year ago now. But we chose not, yeah, we chose not to pull the trigger on it because of the cost a year ago. So
Right.
Uh, yeah, it was a previously agreed upon, well-respected, well-referred firm. And there was very few of them who do what we need them to do.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good then.
Okay. So Mike, you and Jessica can get that for us.
Yeah, we'll work with, uh, we'll work with their attorney, Jeff Sluggett, to get something.
Cool. All right. Anything else on water and sewer?
Not at this time.
COVID?
Yeah, uh, just a couple of things. The, uh, today, obviously restaurants were allowed to open at 25%. Um, our indoor gathering requirements have not changed. We still cannot have no more than 10, which is why we will be on Zoom tonight. Um, this is in place until at least February 21st. Um, I know some of my employees have been getting signed up for vaccinations. So we're getting some of them that are getting set up. Um, still not as many as I'd like. Or at least opportunities made for my employees to be able to do so. But we're, we're working towards that.
Okay. Questions for Mike on COVID? Showboat?
Showboat. Um, a couple of things. Uh, I have not updated the budget because there were no, there were no, there were no revenue managers that came into the city or made out during the last few weeks. And no, we had no bills go out. Um, I know we were supposed to get some, there was some fundraising money that's, that's supposed to come in, but Liz and I just haven't been able to, uh, get with each other to, to finalize that. So we're still in, we're still in good, on good pace from, from getting everything through Wolverine. Uh, construction wise, I was notified last week that there is going to be a delay. The second, the second floor ceiling grid, we will not get that, that, that piece will not be shipped in until March 29th. So it probably won't be mid-April until they get done. So it's gonna, it's gonna slow the project down some and it's completely out of our control. But we are, we are working on that. The, the bids for the DPW building improvements went out today. We have a deadline of a month from Wednesday, so March 3rd for the, for the bids for the, uh, for the DPW building, which would include the bathroom, uh, and so forth. Um, we, we wrote the bid so we could compartmentalize all of the different areas we'd like to see improve. So we can at least ensure that for the bathroom, then we can make sure that the bathroom gets done. If we, if we have money to do the additional areas we'd like, we've set it up in a way so we can do it based on the revenue we have. So that's all I have.
Um, Mark, do you have something for us?
Yeah, I thought I'd give you a quick update if you don't mind, Mr. Bear.
No, sir.
Our sales continue. Uh, let's see. We, uh, last month I told you we had raised 620,000 and change. Today I'll tell you the new number is, uh, 644,000 and change. Which means we have about a little less than 136,000 left to go for our goal of 780,000. Uh, we have sold the heck out of bricks and we're going to keep selling them for a little while yet. Probably less than two months though. We're going to put a deadline on that because moving forward with, uh, with a, uh, memorial wall that will include some of the brick donors. And we want to, uh, we want to move forward with that. So if they, if people want to get their name on the memorial wall, they need to get busy and buy the bricks. Uh, we have sold 279 bricks as of today, uh, for a grand total of 83,580. That's just bricks. So that's really cool. Uh, and also fresh off the presses today, Wolverine, the people that are finishing both first has thrown out a matching grant opportunity for the month of, of February. They will match dollar for dollar, any donation made to the boat up to $5,000. So tell your friends, we have an opportunity to make another 10 grand in the next 30 days. So that's all I have, unless somebody has questions.
Questions for Mark? All right. Thanks, Mark. I do appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
One other thing, Mayor, we should update the organizational committee where we're at with that, um, from our meetings.
Yeah, well, we started work there on a mission statement, uh, working on seeing what we can do about utilities. Uh, we discussed a little bit of a rental structure. Uh, it's slow going, but we're, we're making some headway. We have some bookings already. Um, and then we're going to work on to expanding the LLC to cover more than just the showboat. So there's other entertainment or community opportunity down the road. Um, that would make it so that LLC would be able to take it under their umbrella and hopefully provide some other opportunity. Uh, but that's it. Pretty short meeting. Jim, you don't have anything on that, do you? Where'd Jim go?
He gone.
He went to buy a brick probably. Okay. Well, uh, we can go back to showboat if Jim gets back on and he has anything, but that's all I have. Uh, social district, Mike and Jessica.
Yep. Uh, just so you're aware, um, we have submitted all of our paperwork to the state. We have been approved um, as to have a social district. Um, we are, uh, working with the, um, the licensed premises. I believe five of the six are going to start out doing it. Um, as I said earlier, uh, was hoping for this Friday to open. I don't think we're going to get approvals for the liquor light, for the liquor licenses, for the, for the businesses from the LCC this week. Um, that'll, it'll, it'll be a wait and see. Uh, in the meantime, we have, um, we are going to be getting the, uh, informational material out on the website. A press release here in the next couple of days. We are, we're planning, we're working on, we're, we're, we're planning on our final logistics stuff with DPW and the police department and the fire department. A lot of work has been put into this and hopefully it comes to, to be successful.
I think you will. Any questions on social districts? All right. Uh, fire cost recovery ordinance.
Yep. I was going to bring this back to you tonight for approval. Um, we, Jessica didn't get to, to work on this until late last week and realized there was a glitch with the ordinance. Um, the ordinance that was presented to you is only applicable to townships. So, um, it didn't take into account the Home Rule City Act. So Jessica's trying to work on making sure that that can be incorporated in the ordinance. So we hope to have that for you next meeting.
Okay. And we have a fire authority on the 11th. So.
And I, I did notify the fire chief as to what was going on.
Okay. Perfect. Uh, anything for Mike on the fire cost recovery? All right. New business, uh, Lowell Historical Museum, Lisa.
Oh, thank you for having me tonight. Um, every year, as you know, we give the city council an update on what the museum's been doing for the past year. So I wanted to give you a look at how 2020 affected the museum. Um, obviously like everything else, 2020 was an extremely odd year for us. Um, a lot of what we had planned as far as social events were canceled or altered. Um, we had a public program on March 12th and then on March 13th, Um, we had a public program on March twelfth, and then on March thirteenth, we effectively had to shut down for a time. Um, during that time, we really switched gears to trying to find different ways to connect our community with history. Um, so I wanted to share some of the things that we were able to achieve last year with you. Um, even in spite of the shutdown, we still had a little over twenty-seven thousand people that we directly saw, um, through our exhibits and programming. In addition, we really put an emphasis on sharing things online and through social media with people. And, um, the numbers that we saw generated through that were, were truly astounding to us. Um, we had over one hundred and thirteen thousand people read our emails, read our Facebook posts, share posts, interact with us directly. Um, which for a museum our size is really pretty amazing. Um, one of the main projects that we undertook was a program called the ABCs of Lowell History. And so we introduced a weekly series where we looked at a different topic in Lowell history every week. Um, it was, it was a lot of work, a lot of research, a lot of writing, but also a great way to share a lot of local history stories that maybe weren't big enough to make it into their own exhibit, um, but are truly remarkable stories in Lowell's past. And the interest and feedback for this has just continued to grow. Um, we're currently in the second round of the alphabet. The Lowell Ledger graciously, um, picked up the series as well, and so they're sharing it in a print media, which is wonderful because not everybody is connected to the internet. Uh, we're sharing it through direct email, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter every week. Um, and then Lowell First Look is also sharing these online. So we've really expanded our community considerably, um, through this program. And it's just been really great to see the feedback that we're getting from the community with this program. We're sharing it with teachers and the schools. Um, we get comments from people out of state that used to live here in Lowell that are reconnecting with their history. So, um, for a time when we couldn't see people face-to-face, it's really been a great tool for us to get that history out into the hands of people. Um, March, April, and May are typically our busiest times for school students. Um, and we had scheduled a lot of, um, school groups to come in to do our museum immersion program. And then the shutdown happened, and so we ended up having to figure out a way to offer that program online, which was a pretty abrupt for us. Um, but we ended up taping all of the programs and sharing those with teachers and doing some interaction with them and their students from home. Um, and that worked well. We're doing some more of that again this year, um, because again, we're, we're seeing, um, that we can't have field trips in their traditional form. Um, we also undertook at the start of this year to transform all of our field trips into virtual experiences. So we've, um, taped each of the field trips that we would normally offer to students and taught them as if the kids were there in the room with us. And then we've shared those links, um, through YouTube with all of our teachers. And so they're able to share those with their virtual or their in-class students. And while it's not the same as having the kids in the museum and right in front of us, it does give them the opportunity to connect in with that history and really get a, a look at Lowell's past. Um, and we're getting good feedback from the teachers for that. Um, we decided to share it with all of the elementary school grades, not just for the grade that the, um, program is intended for, in the hopes that if teachers need that extra resource, um, while they're doing their virtual work, that they can take advantage of that. Um, and so we have seen some cross-use of that programming over different grade levels, um, which has been, which has been great. Um, in the summer, we usually do a summer camp for area youth that looks at local history, and we have the kids for a full day. We've done programs out at Fallisburg and Hades Farm Stand. This year, we were set to do something at the new township park in the Fur Trade Cabin. And obviously with social distancing, we just couldn't quite figure out a way to do that safely. And so we developed an online summer camp. Um, we came up with three different activities that the kids could do at home. We delivered to their house all the materials that they needed, along with links to YouTube videos of us showing them how to do the activities. Um, and that worked out really well. Um, we are still getting requests to develop more of those. Um, people liked being able to do the activities in their own home and have quality craft activities that link their students in with, um, local history. Um, in addition to that, we developed four more interpretive boards, um, similar to the ones that we have on Main Street and the Riverwalk. We've been deliver, de, developing a series of those for the Lowell Township Park as well. Um, and so we did a second, um, set of four for that park this year. Um, and then we also had the Fur Trade Cabin open on Thursdays this summer so that people could come and walk through the cabin and learn about the first-rate era history in Lowell. Um, oral history has been a big emphasis for us in the past couple of years. We have a fantastic group of volunteers who are actively going out and, um, conducting oral history interviews of people in our town. And this year, we undertook to get all of those digitalized. We've had things on, everything from VHS tapes to DVDs to digital, and all of that technology is sort of going by the wayside and everything's turning to digital. So we digitalized all of our, um, interviews for preservation's sake, but also now we're setting them up on our website. So people can go to our oral history section and just click on a name and hear the whole interview and see the whole thing, um, from a large number of our local residents. And then they've also been being shared on the, um, Lowell radio station, ninety-two point three on Sunday evenings. Um, we took a little break from that this fall and winter as we're getting more digitalized, but we're hoping to be reintroducing that coming up here. Um, but in the meantime, people can find them on our website. So that's been a great way as well to get history out to people this year. Um, we moved our fundraiser online. We couldn't have that this year. In the summer, we always have our big fundraiser in the garden. Um, we switched that to a donation format. People could donate to the, uh, their ticket price. And then we gave them a gift card to one of the organizations that would have normally been participating in. So local restaurants, the breweries, that kind of thing. Um, and we were hoping with that, not only to benefit the museum, but also get some people out into, um, the restaurants and breweries that help support the event every year. Um, and that was very, very successful. Um, so this year was kind of a crazy year, but we felt like we really, um, made contact with a lot of people. We were able to provide the services that we typically do in a year, as well as expand that a bit. Twenty-twenty-one, we're not exactly sure what to expect, just like anyone else. We don't know when this is really truly gonna turn around. Um, we do have programming planned, but we're not setting dates until we're sure that we can gather people. Um, we are looking, we're going to be turning the ABCs of History series into a printed booklet form. We've gotten a lot of requests for that, and so we're going to be, um, working on that with a local designer and print shop this year. We're gonna be doing more interpretive boards. Um, and then we'll have the Fur Trade Cabin open this summer as well, and the museum is open on Thursdays currently, as well as by appointment. Um, and then we're working really closely with the schools to develop programming that fits their curriculum and their needs as that changes, um, going forward. Um, so we're hopeful that twenty-twenty will start to look a little more familiar. But if it doesn't, we have a lot of ideas for ways that we can still, um, be an asset to the community and help to spread the word about the amazing history that, that Lowell has. Um, and we just wanna thank you all for your continued support and enthusiasm for the museum and the history of our community. And, um, just really glad to be a part of Lowell through all of this craziness. It's been just amazing to see the interest that everyone's had in, in hearing about our history, um, over the course of, of many years. But this year in particular, when everyone's had a lot on their minds.
Cool. Any questions for Lisa? Well, we appreciate you as well. I think a lot of that stuff is super cool, and I'm always checking the internet for my next ABCs. And I saw your book at the Target the other day, too.
Oh, fun.
I figured I would just come buy it directly from you, and then I can get it autographed and sell it online or something.
I think you, you did a great job of, um, adapting in twenty-twenty. Good job.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, thank you. We've got a good team. Thank you.
You guys are awesome. All right, um, Lowell Little League, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, when I first came to Fenton, I'm sorry, when I first came to Lowell, in August of nineteen, one of the first things that was discussed was ball field rentals and, and taking a look at that. So started getting as much information as I could and, and looked at what other communities do in the area. Here in Lowell, we charge a dollar per person, uh, per play group, ball group, if you will. We've got several groups, Lowell Little League, YMCA, Backyard Dreams, ACA, Aces, the Michigan Warriors, all want to use our fields. Looking at change of operations at the city with the loss of Luanne, who basically handled all the scheduling, changes in operations at City Hall. Uh, known issues with scheduling and how the groups work out scheduling amongst themselves. Um, trying to be equitable and fair with our fees without also being owners on the, on the teams. Um, put together a different program, one where we charge our per-field-per-day, uh, amount. Put together a program where, where with the fee, um, the, we put together a group, we'll pull all the groups together, sit down with them, explain what's going on, uh, in early winter, end of winter, say, March or early April. Have them come back with their schedules and their money for the use of the fields. And then we'll put together a schedule and, uh, we'd be good to go for the year. Last year, in about this time, Little League approached the city on allowing them, uh, Lowell Little League to, uh, uh, handle our ball fields and the scheduling of them all. But because of COVID, that didn't go very far because we didn't have much baseball until late summer and into the fall. And then we had all the teams scrambling, just trying to get a day here, a day there. It was really confusing how to keep up with them on. Uh, but it worked out. They got to play their games. So sitting down, looking at how much the fields are used, we have five fields in our two parks. Uh, they get used approximately a hundred and thirty days in the year. We determined that, uh, we, we looked at charging, thought of charging ten dollars a day. And then through the negotiations with Little League, we lowered that down. Because what we did after we put the program together is we approached Lowell Little League, told them what the program was, and asked them if they would like to, again, do the scheduling of the fields between themselves and all the other groups. Um, again, we're talking dollar amounts, we lowered the, the amount down to eight dollars. They said that that was more fair to what they felt the use of their fields would be. So what we'd like to do is, uh, have Lowell Little League work with the other groups. Again, set them all down, put together a schedule of when they have to have their day and time schedules put together. And then have Lowell Little League work with these groups to, uh, reserve the fields for the year. Yeah, we, we talked with Lowell Little League about this. They were very receptive to it. Uh, went to the Parks and Recreation Commission a couple of times to discuss it. First time we discussed it, they too had some concerns and issues. We worked through them with Little League and amongst ourselves. And, uh, in the end, the, uh, the, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, was in favor of, uh, entering into agreement with our baseball field fee usage and the proposal with Lowell Little League of eight dollars per field per day. And allow Lowell Little League to work with the other groups to share the fields with them. Um, if City Council's, uh, agreement with something like this, we still have to go through the process of, uh, writing up a new agreement between the city and Lowell Little League, but includes language also for the other groups utilize the fields. We wanted to make sure this is the direction we wanted to go before we went that far. We're looking at a multiple-year agreement with the ability for both sides to sit down and make sure it's working. And if it isn't, give us both an out to, uh, to, uh, cancel the agreement if need be. We don't want to make it, we don't want to make it inequitable for either, for either parties involved.
How many, did the Parks and Rec discuss it all, Dan? How many years? Would it be a three-year deal? Or is there anything comparable that we could look at and say?
Well, we discussed it a bit. My thought was a three-year agreement would be a good starting point. Cause I think that's the max we can do anyway, but then with the options in there, after a year to sit down and make sure that it is equitable for both parties. And, and then if so, continue to the next two, if not, have outs for one or the other, and then start over.
Okay, thank you. Um, look then for any questions for Dan on Little League?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't take that fifty-two hundred dollars and eat it up in attorney fees by drafting a, a, a long, long drawing process.
Crickets.
We'll do our best.
Yeah, I, I knew you would.
All right. Uh, motion then to have Jessica draft a usage fee schedule for Lowell Little League.
I make the motion that she draft it fast.
In under an hour, and I'll support. A motion, I guess, and a second. Uh, Sue?
Council member Groves? Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Council member Salh Lito?
Yes.
Council member Yipich?
Yes.
And Council member Chambers?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Uh, temperature control system, Mike?
Yep, uh, the, uh, the City Hall Temperature Control System is the original system used for this building. It was constructed in two thousand and three. The temperature control seption, system is obsolete and has become very difficult to manage over the past few years as the technology has moved past the system's capability. In the current fiscal year budget, twenty-one thousand dollars was budgeted as the city and DDA were going to contribute fifty percent toward, each towards the upgrade. The previous estimate was completed approximately a year and a half ago, and I did increase it some as I knew there'd be an increase, but I hadn't get, I didn't get an official estimate at budget time. This week, I received an updated quote from our provider, EnterTap, and the cost is twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars, which would be split fifty percent by both the DDA and the city. This will provide us with the following. It'll replace and upgrade the controllers to a modernized controller system. It'll provide one year of software maintenance, rebuild systems programs, rebuild graphics and schedules for new controllers, working with our IT consultant to establish new controller in our IT network and setting up alarms and remote notifications. This is needed for City Hall. If you've gone to a meeting upstairs and noticed it's fifty degrees when it really should be seventy degrees and we can't get it to seventy degrees, well, this is the reason why. Um, also, there's parts of the building where when it's in, in the summertime, we, there's nothing we can do because, but what, there'll be a room that'll be like fifty-six degrees, but the rest of the, uh, the rest of the, 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 the building will be at seventy-four. So this would hopefully cur, this will up, this update will hopefully correct that as well. Um, and I said we've had a number of issues through the years. So, um, EnterTap is a preferred vendor as they are the ones who designed this for us originally, back when the building was built. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approved for an upgrade to our temperature control system with EnterTap, and it costs not to exceed twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars.
Any questions for Mike?
I have one, and that's regarding the warranty. I see they're providing the one-year software maintenance. Uh, what is the manufacturer's warranty on this equipment? Is it two years, one year? What, what are you getting, Mike?
That's a good question. I don't know.
I didn't see it in their bed package or any extended offer, other than it's sold in one, three, and five-year increments for the software, uh, agreement, so.
I was curious, reading this, if the system that they put in has been a disaster, why are we gonna hire the same firm to upgrade theirs, to update their system?
I don't think it was a disaster in a sense. It's just old. We haven't updated it.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I kicked this can down the road as long as I could, cause I didn't want to spend the money. But I gotta spend the money now. That's, that's the problem. I mean, I don't think it was, I don't think it was them, so to speak. It's, I mean, the, the biggest thing is like, I control the temperatures. I literally have to go to the old Internet Explorer in order to operate the system. I can't use it Google Chrome. I can't use Safari. I can't use Firefox. It has to be the old Internet Explorer, and then I have to do Java updates every time I do an up, I, I try and change the temperature. So it's more, I don't think it's necessarily a failure on EnterTap's part. It's just an old system.
Okay.
Yeah, and this isn't the first time we've talked about that system either, so.
No.
Sitting on council, I think this is the third time this has come up, so.
Yeah.
Um, I do believe, uh, it is time to get it fixed, because when we sit up there and you gotta wear your jacket to sit in that room, that's really no fun.
Yeah, it's, it's time to. It's time to rip off the Band-Aid and get it fixed.
Yeah, I agree.
I said, I think the time is now. I don't want to.
Yet in the meetings.
Leah has never sat up there in a corner. We ought to have at least one before we. Or it's eighty-four degrees.
Those social distance fires up into this.
All right, I think we could hit twenty-two thousand and just repairs and maintenance if we leave this old one in anyway. So we might as well get something new. Motion to approve the upgrade and not wear coats in City Hall anymore. So moved. Marty and Leah, any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yeah.
All right, Boarding Commission reports, Marty.
I have none. Mine are all coming up.
This probably won't work, but it's kind of fun at the historic district. Dollar General is going to be. Upgrading and expanding about twenty-one feet to the east. They're going to keep the front looking the same, and then that whole, they're expanding the store by twenty-one feet, the length of the store. They're also going to update the parking lot, throw some green space in there. The plans that they brought in looked really good, and everybody was, the historic district passed it without a hitch. So I thought that was kind of cool.
Heard a lot of stuff, a lot of. Chatter in the community about how much better that place is now lately.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
All right. Leah.
I have no updates. All my meetings are coming up.
Jim.
Same.
All right, City Managers report, Michael.
I don't know if they're on tonight. I can't tell, but. WWRW, the ninety-two point three in Lowell, they're going to be broadcasting our meetings through Zoom. I thought they were going to be on tonight. I don't know if they were. But I wanted to welcome, welcome them back. Last week, I met with. A representative from Edward Jones by the name of Greg Flick. He was representing the estate of Donna Ford. I think I, I informed you at a previous council meeting that we did receive. Proceed, proceeds to the city for landscaping in conjunction with the. The Lowell Showboat Garden Club. I was notified that we will, will receive a hundred and ten thousand dollars. From, from the estate of Donna Ford. There is some, there are some, there is some legal resolutions that have to be looked at. We are going to have to set up some accounts in, in order for the money to, to transfer over. I have sent the, the proper paperwork to Jessica for review. I hope to have that at your next council meeting. As I've mentioned before, we're, we're spending a lot of time getting the social district ready. Hopefully, everything goes well. I, like I said, the, the closer to Friday we get, I, I, I don't think this week's going to happen, but I'll, I'll let you know regardless. I've reached out to the Kent County Road Commission. I've asked them to consider paving Alden Nash from Bowes to G. They normally don't put their paving, they don't, they don't put their paving plans in place until after the winter budget. Once they, once they realize how much money they spent on winter maintenance. But they didn't, they did ensure me that they were going to get an engineer to get an estimate on that, so hopefully we can get that. That area of Alden Nash repaired. I know we're also in the process right now of finalizing our estimates for Monroe and Washington. So we can start, so we can put out the forty-five day notices for the financing through USDA. I know Jessica and Dave met on Friday regarding that, and we should have something soon. All the plans for Amity Street have been sent over to the county. The county will be the, will be doing the bidding for the project. As we're using CBG funds, so that has gone over, over to them. We're in the process of reviewing Jane Ellen, final engineering drawings, ready to go out for bid, hope to, hopefully go out for bid here. Very shortly, so we're moving forward on that project as well, and that's all I have.
Fantastic. Any questions for Mike?
My, my guy today, Mike, on the estate, if it's that kind of money and it's going to. Like upkeep of that, we look at extending that over years of spending some of that money wisely as, as we need it.
I got a couple of quick ideas that I'd like to consider. I think I mentioned to you, bridge boxes.
Right, yeah.
Cost thing, but that's something that we could do. I have another idea that Dan and I have kicked around based off just reading. Some things from the past, got an idea that, that we're kicking around. But, you know, I, 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 I'm, my plan is, is once we get these, once we get everything in line, I was going to reach out to the Showboat Garden, the Garber. The Showboat Garden Club and come up with a plan.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Mike, there's no caveats on, as of right now, on what we can use that money for. It's just.
It may be used for landscaping and it has to be used in conjunction with the Lowell Showboat Garden Club.
Perfect. All right, Sue, nothing new for appointments?
I did just hear from our assessors that Marty or Martin McBee has resigned. So we do have a vacancy again for the Board of Review, but the other two want to continue.
Okay. All right, we'll look for somebody. That Board of Review, how many times have they met in the last five years? Just the once, right?
No, they meet a couple of times a year.
Oh, do they? Okay. All right, we'll look for somebody for Board of Review, sure. Council comments, Marty?
We had the wind about winter thing in downtown Lowell. It was good seeing a whole bunch of people show up. It's fun when our main street merchants all work together and play together. And they're all looking out for each other, so that's a pretty special thing. I'd like to thank the DPW guys for snowplowing. I had a sunway sitting out here. They had snowplowed around it several times, but it got done. Roads were done perfectly, so good job. And it was good to see Jeff Phillips, the little city Zamboni doing the sidewalk. So I told him if he grows his beard out a little longer, next year I'm going to hire him as Santa Claus at the store. So there you go. That's all I got.
Awesome. Cliff?
Had an interesting, uh, young man, Zach DeBoer, who's only lived in Lowell for a couple of years. Actually contacted me. He's interested in running for City Council the next time. It comes up for an election. He wanted to pick my brain a little bit. And I hope he ends up watching this. I directed him to all the sites and told him he can watch meetings and get a feel for what we do. And how we do it. I thought it was kind of neat.
You need to get him on one of these boards. Let him start out early and see how much he likes it.
Good point. I have his email address.
That's the term, picking a little of Cliff's brain. Because that's what he. My thing, Dan, Dan, if you could have the guys raise the plow another half inch, I, Jackson Street in, in my street would maybe be so bumpy. Be ripping out that, that. Whatever you call it, patch as quick as they can put it down, and it's really extending down, down the street. I do have to apologize. I thought I could make it through the meeting without losing my internet, but that had happened. So I missed quite a bit of the middle there with Mike on the old business, so that's it.
Oh, Jim, we did talk about the Showboat Committee meeting. Did you have anything on that?
No, I, I didn't have anything. I couldn't attend the last one. My, my father-in-law passed away, and I can't make this Thursday. That, that's Thursday. It says funeral. So I will not be able to make that meeting.
All right, Leah.
Today, I actually got to do a tour of the wastewater treatment center, so that was pretty cool. I'm pretty anxious to get out into the community and start seeing everybody in person. But I have had some pretty exciting conversations with other business owners in town. And I'm just looking forward to seeing how the social district can help everybody. That's it.
And I don't have anything. So Jim, before you lose internet.
I'll make a motion adjourn at eight fifty-nine.
Support.
Jim and Marty, Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Saying goodbye from Lowell, Michigan.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Nighty night.